And, you know, we're not Washington DC, we can't print money. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Let's go into executive session.
Sorry, I would like, Laura, are there people signed up for public comment?
For executive session items.
Yeah, for executive session items, so I would like to request that they're able to speak before we go in to discuss.
Second.
Normally, we would have the discussion and then we would have the...
Sure, and I've always kind of had an issue with that, I mean, if people want us to know what their concerns are before we take in the, you know, and make decisions on issues, I think we should be hearing their concerns before, so we can address those and answer the, ask those questions in executive.
City Attorney, do you want to comment?
Mayor, Council can decide whenever you want to allow the public to speak, I just want to be clear, the Council's not going to be asked to take any action today.
Sure.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak, thank you, City Attorney, but if they do have questions, that we are then able to ask the City Attorney in executive, I would like to have the opportunity to know what those concerns are.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, let's vote on it.
Council, there is a motion and a second to take public comment before retiring to executive session, and I'll take a roll call on that motion, Representative Schwartzman.
Aye.
Anello.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Salsido.
Perez.
Aye.
Rivera.
Yes.
And Lizaraga, and that motion does pass unanimously. This morning, we have sixteen members of the public that signed up to speak on EX1 and EX2, and one on EX5. So, I'll call the, the members that signed up to speak on EX1, Adrian Ordóñez. He will be followed by Javier Miranda, Claudia Reyes, Josh Simmons, Priscilla Muñoz, Diego Carlos, Desiree Miller. Good morning, Mr. Ordóñez, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I have some documents that I'd like to submit, I apologize for not doing that earlier. Do I place some under the scanner here? Okay. First, I'd like for you all to take a look at, oh, here you go, this article from the American Prospect that was published, I have to double check, October 9th of this year. So, this article is regarding specifically the purchase, or the proposed sale, I should say, of El Paso Electric by JP Morgan. It goes into great detail, and I think it'll answer a few questions that y'all may have about the proposed sale. I'll put this up just so y'all can take a look at it if you'd like. My concern as, as a citizen of District 6, is that we're not informing the public enough about this proposed sale. I do think that it's incumbent upon all of y'all to make sure that this is something that El Paso as a whole, or at least generally, knows about, because right now, we're relying upon a narrative that's being constructed by two legacy media institutions, and that's basically it. People are under the impression that this is a done deal, and I think it's a disservice to every El Pasuwin who pays into this electric utility to be under that impression, which is a false impression. I understand there's some questions about whether or not, as to our options, as opposed to selling to a corporate entity. For the sake of time, I'd like for you all to take note of Texas Local Government Codes 552.001 from 2012, 552.002, and Texas Utility Code 37.051 and 37.059. Again, for the sake of time, I won't go into detail, but please take a look at those, and that'll answer a few questions about what we can do as opposed to selling our electric utility company. Here's another article from American Prospect, published on October 7th, and this goes into detail about how private equity firms operate. This is through the lens of the healthcare industry. And please take a look at these articles, because it goes into detail about what's going to happen with this process that JP Morgan, excuse me, IIF is trying to go through, right? Again, the lack of transparency with the, with the proposed sale is outrageous, okay? I'm sure some of y'all have worked in law, when you're prosecuting someone, you take into account their criminal record and their history. Personally, I think we should take into account JP Morgan's criminal record and history, because they do have one, okay? They've been charged $410 million in the past for price fixing in utility markets. I think that should be of note and really important for y'all to take notice of. I know it's repetitive. Again, I have another document to submit to y'all, and you may have seen this already, but for the sake of public record, I'd like to share it. And, again, I'm sure y'all have seen that already, you know what it's about, like I said, it's for the sake of clarity. Lastly, I want to make sure to put this in, I want y'all, every single one of you, to have meetings, public meetings, talking about the information for this proposed sale in every single district. It's important.
Thank you, sir, you've reached the three minutes.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Javier Miranda. Good morning, Mr. Miranda, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good morning. I'm here to ask you to oppose the, the sale of El Paso Electric to JP Morgan, and once again, it's yet another compelling reason for the city of El Paso to establish a solar energy co-op. The neoliberal engagement which entails the sale of El Paso Electric Company to JP Morgan Chase will have a detrimental impact on our community and should be opposed. We already incurred some of the highest utility rates in the region, and given that we have no other choice of energy providers, the guaranteed dividends will be paid through even higher consumer rates. The assumption can be made that JP Morgan Chase, of which has been previously been found guilty of market manipulation, rate increases, and subsequently been fined $400 million by the US Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, well, they'll exploit our community for certain. Please oppose the Wall Street deal, it's environmentally disastrous in terms of the company's reliance on fracking and other harmful extraction of fossil fuels as well. They'll bring this to our community. And finally, members of the Council, you folks are requested to recuse yourselves from the vote if you receive campaign contributions from individuals associated with both companies, and if you are a stockholder. Thank you.
Thank you, the next speaker is Ms. Claudia Reyes. Good morning, Ms. Reyes, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Good morning, thank you. I'm going to submit this document, it's an article from Bloomberg, came out in June 3rd. It lays out some very minimal details regarding this buy. What is most interesting in their observation is this being the biggest utility deal for both El Paso and JP Morgan, for the JP Morgan Investment Fund in their utility sectors. I think it's unacceptable that such a big deal is being made behind closed doors in a process that has not been transparent at all. So, like my peers, I'm requesting that this process become more transparent by holding public town halls or public meetings at every district, so that the public can be better informed of this deal that will directly impact their daily lives. Thank you.
Thank you, the next speaker is Mr. Josh Simmons. Good morning, Mr. Simmons, you have three minutes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. I'm Josh Simmons, I am an electrical engineer, I'm a sitting appointee to the React Committee here in El Paso, and I am also an organizer for Sunrise El Paso. I would like to submit to the record two letters I have in my possession for city record and for your consideration. One is a request from Tyler Slocombe to the US Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and that letter is directed to Mr. Lingam, and it was a request to have a intervention, to intervene with the application that has been filed by IIF US Holdings II. And I have another letter that was sent by Senator Jose Rodriguez, and the same request to have an intervention and to express the importance of El Paso Electric to our community, and how that should be a, be used for our benefit and for the benefit of external corporations that are not localized here in El Paso. So, I want to urge the Mayor and City Council to, to consider looking at a feasibility study for the possession of El Paso Electric, for the use of the El Paso community and the surrounding desert region. The giving up a right to have an involvement from a local voice and standpoint reduces our opportunity to have any move towards a renewable, sustainable energy future. We should own our future, and that energy is a right of the people of the desert southwest. We have the opportunity to move in a renewable, sustainable energy through photovoltaics and other energy generation sources, and if we do not capitalize on that now, we'll forever lose that opportunity and will lead to, what I fear, a bad turn of future for El Paso. So, I'm going to submit these letters for record, and I thank you for your time, and I hope that you can really evaluate the information we're presenting, really look at this from a future growth standpoint, not in the short term or the long term, and how we can really turn El Paso into a, and really maximize its potential with the use of the sustainable renewable energy we possess here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Priscilla Muñoz. Good morning, Ms. Muñoz, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, City Staff. My name is Priscilla, and I'm a representative of Sunrise Movement and a concerned El Paso citizen from District 7. This is in reference to Items X1 and X2. You are currently reviewing and negotiating transferring our franchise agreement as it stands with El Paso Electric to Sun Jupiter Holdings. Not only do I strongly oppose even the consideration of this, I demand to know why something that should concern all citizens of El Paso is being done behind closed doors. What I want to know is why public hearings and meetings have not been done within every district to inform El Paso Electric ratepayers that their electric company is in consideration of being sold out to the highest bidder, which in turn, whose only interest as a private equity firm is to turn it around for profit and sell it for profit. What I want to know is how you are okay with that. Since we have the legal authority to conceal our franchise agreements, and if the answer to this is a no, I want to know where that information is. I want to know why you, as the representatives of the people of this city, are not doing at the very least your due diligence and conducting a feasibility study, so that instead of selling our house right away to the first corporate highest bidder, you are instead looking into the economic development of this city by taking back our electric company to municipalize it. I also have some documents that I would like to submit for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, the next speaker is Mr. Diego Carlos.
For documents, you give them to the city clerk.
I will take them for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Carlos, you have three minutes, sir.
Morning. Like I said, my name's Diego Carlos, I'm speaking as a concerned citizen for the acquisition of El Paso Electric by IIF. IIF is an open, open, held in an open secret shell company by JP Morgan. I mean, my confederates before me have said it much clearer than I can. There's no transparency in this process, this, El Paso Electric is a company that's, that affects hundreds of thousands of people here in this city, where the theory is that with the acquisition of El Paso Electric from IIF, that El Paso will become a pawn to big financial interests, few will benefit from this at the expense of the public. In fact, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission fined JP Morgan back in 2013 for energy, energy manipulation, as Mr. Ordóñez said before. And, as well, the ownership of IIF is, I talk about it being a shell company and being an open secret. The one filing was made by IIF that disclosed the US Holdings, 2GP paid only $10 to be a partner in one subsidiary of a company being set up in El Paso Electric ownership chain. So, there's question over how much stake these holders have over these companies, saying that, you know, this is a, very clearly just a farce to show that JP Morgan is controlling these IIF holdings, and even though there's no direct correlation between those two, it's still clear that they're the ones pulling the strings here. So, what I'm asking for is for, like my, the speakers before me have asked, is more open process to these meetings and to this decision being made, and furthermore, delaying this vote and public meetings with the owners of IIF, because it remains that these three owners, again, one of them paying $10 for ownership stake here, where are they? That's, that's my question, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, the next speaker is Ms. Desiree Miller. Ms. Miller also signed up to speak on EX1 and EX2.
Yes, hello.
Good morning, ma'am, you have three minutes.
My name is Desiree Miller, and I'm here with Sunrise El Paso, and I'm a resident of District 5, and I'm here to speak on EX1 and EX2. Sunrise El Paso is a youth-led environmental justice organization, and we recently conducted an interview with a man by the name of Tyson Slocombe. Tyson Slocombe is the Energy Program Director at Public Citizen, which is a nonpartisan consumer advocacy organization. In this interview, Tyson Slocombe expressed in his professional capacity as an expert on power dealings in the energy sector, he expressed his concern that this deal does not, is not in the public interest, and taking into consideration this information, I am extremely concerned as a citizen of El Paso, that this deal is proceeding without sufficient transparency or availability for a public comment. So, I'm here to ask that any further dealings that are conducted regarding this sale are conducted with more transparency, and to ask personally from my district representative of District 5, that public meetings be held so that the public can be more informed and provide their comment. I am submitting a document with instructions on how this interview with Tyson Slocombe can be accessed by you, so that you may know the information that we've retrieved. Thank you.
Thank you, the next speaker is Dominic Chacon. Mr. Chacon signed up on EX1 and EX2. Good morning, Mr. Chacon, you have three minutes, sir.
Hello, good morning, thank you all so much for having us and allowing us to speak before you go into executive session. My name is Dominic Chacon, I'm a resident of District 4, and along with my colleagues, I'd like to submit a response, a public citizen to the Federal Energy Regulation Commission in regards to the acquisition of El Paso Electric by Sun Jupiter Holding and IIF filed earlier this year. And basically, this document outlines the fact that the structure of IIF is purposely complex, and it also contacts its ties to JP Morgan as being purposely non-transparent. Specifically, it cites how the New Mexi, New Mexico regulators were under the impression that there was one sole owner, CEO, of IIF, and only to come out that he's one of 48. So, if New Mexico regulators are not informed about this, how informed are we? And this standard of secrecy and non-transparency might be the standard for other private equity firms, like the ones who bought and were responsible for the bankrupts of a business like Toys R Us, but this is absolutely not the standard for our electric utility company. We are not just a store in the mall that's going to be sold to another owner, this is an electric utility company, and electricity is a human right. Our access to electricity is inherently tied to our community's well-being and actually represents the true meaning of quality of life. In other words, we need electricity to survive, and that's also what this article contexts, is why that that's important. Our electricity company is going to be around for years, and so it is a profit-making opportunity for a private equity firm, and specifically to the interests of fossil fuels who are the primary users of our electric company. And that's ultimately why we're here today, because we are a group of young people who are going to be the first ones who deal with the ramifications of climate change. I ask each and every one of you all, as you go into executive session, to please keep that in mind, because in the year 2050, where will you all be? I will be about 50 years old, and that's when we're going to be seeing the effects of climate change. So, we ask that you are wearing your critical thinking hat, and that you are asking yourself about the, the moral ramifications, and asking yourself as well, how it would be if you turned off your electricity for one month? How would your life be impacted? Electricity is a human right. There are also studies out there that show when you're, when you turn off your electricity, it is basically a death sentence, especially if you are low income, if you are women, or if you are elderly. If you have your electricity turned off, all your food goes bad in, in your fridge, and everything that you've been counting on for a while is disappeared. If you require oxygen tank and you don't have electricity, those are public health issues, and women are more vulnerable to suffering the economic oppression that we have right now. And I also want to cite the history of JP Morgan, they have had over $34 billion of fines for all kinds of offenses that they committed in the energy market, etc.
Mr. Chacon, thank you, you've reached the three minutes, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Andrew Torres. Good morning, Mr. Torres, you'll have three minutes, sir, and Mr. Torres did sign up on EX1 and EX2.
Yes, good morning, hi, I'd like to show something on the screen right now. So, that's going to show the fines that they actually have, so basically what Dominic was actually addressing is, they have over $13 billion in fines, so their highest fine is actually for, it's a very, very high amount, and it's for toxic assets, so, oh.
Sorry.
So, the highest one is toxic assets, so that means that the investments have become worthless, because the market for them has collapsed. So, this bank is directly tied to the economic crash that happened in 2007, they have been, you know, responsible for many, many problems in the market, they have caused a lot of damage in a very short amount of time, in my lifetime. So, the last one is, on the page is actually $410 million of energy market manipulation, so they're no strangers to this, so I really want you all to know, like, they know exactly what they're doing here. They came to our community knowing exactly what they were going to get from our community, they know how much profit that this community could be making if this was a public utility, they know exactly what they're getting from this deal, and we cannot be, I guess, naive to these people's interests. This is something that is very obvious, that after a whole, you know, my lifetime's worth of time, I've seen that this company is, you know, capable of doing quite a lot of damage in a very short amount of time. So, they're actually IFF US Holdings, so just to give some clarification, it's actually not exactly JP Morgan. The reason being is because they're supposedly, this little IFF US Holdings is, you know, like how mentioned, it's a private group that is in, kind of in the public, it's actually owned by three people, but they serve three-year terms, and they're only allowed to serve three times on these terms. So, it's like a less than 10-year ownership of this IFF Holdings that conveniently has zero employees, so they use all JP Morgan employees. Their entire workforce is implied, is employed by JP Morgan Chase, and JP Morgan Chase has always been placed as the co-executive on the board of directors of every single purchase and every single company that they acquire. So, this is JP Morgan Chase, to be very, very frank. They've bought 120 million Class A shares of Coastal State Winds from JP Morgan Chase, so I am sure that they see the solar prospect here in El Paso, they know where we're going, they know the future of El Paso, and they want to take full advantage of it. They're ready to buy all the shares on all the solar, they're ready to, you know, monopolize on this purchase, and into, real quick, and I end real quick, on 2018, the US found that the US has 242,000 solar jobs right now, so this is just going to increase. El Paso is the 10th largest, sunniest city in the entire world, and we are completely, completely capable of being a sustainable community, being a beautiful example for the state of Texas, so thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Blanca Gattin Moss, and she signed up to speak on EX2. Good morning, Ms. Moss, you'll have three minutes, ma'am. If you can just place it on the elbow, face up. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Here I am again, I have been coming before you for about 10 years, talking about solar energy, and I'm here again to talk to you about the sale of El Paso Electric to JP Morgan. This is very serious. I spoke with many of you before all of this came down about the smart meter. You all agreed to deploy the smart meter, even though I warned you all against it. This is why JP Morgan wants El Paso Electric. The technology that it's, it's in that smart meter will provide them consistent, constant, high profits, that's what it's about. And all we're asking is, please, please, put a pause on this, look at other options. Right now, I just heard you all talk about money, and how in debt the city is. This, this is our pathway, we can do something with this. If we look at the option of owning the electric utility for us, for our benefit, for the benefit of our community, keeping our wealth here, not extracting it to somebody else, or making only a few people very wealthy, this is a big option, a big opportunity for us. Give us a little bit of time, do that feasibility study, give us the time to give you all that information, okay? We have that information, we can give you a better pathway, so please put a pause on this, give us a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, the next speaker is Marlo Olgin. Marlo Olgin. Mr. Olgin signed up on EX1 and EX2. He's not here, thank you. Miguel Ángel Oscoto. Mr. Oscoto signed up on EX1 and EX2. Good morning, sir, you have three minutes.
Hello, City Council, thank you for, for hearing us out. My name is Miguel, I'm also part of the Sunrise Movement, we are a youth-led environmental justice organization, and, yeah, we're just getting started. Right now, you will consider transferring over your transfer, your franchise agreement to Sun Jupiter, and I, we really advise you not to do this, because your power as a city council lies within the franchise agreement, so please do not transfer this over to JP Morgan, it is your tool to, to oppose this buyout and represent your community, so please do not do this. There are many reasons, there are so many reasons why we should oppose this deal and start looking into municipally-owned utility systems. And, even if you're, if you're leaning towards supporting it, please, please, conduct city, conduct town halls in every single district in El Paso, that is the least that you can do. Inform the community about what is happening, and, so the least you can do is set up a town hall at each district, and, secondly, conduct a feasibility study as to what it would cost and what are the benefits of going municipal-owned electric utilities, like Austin, like San Antonio, like so many other cities that have successfully done this in the past. Please consider making this feasibility study part of your decision. I'm going to be submitting into your record something I believe you, you all have read, it's a report by Kenneth Anderson about what are the implications of JP Morgan acquiring El Paso Electric. So, there's one, there's one fact that is undeniable among all this, depending on where you stand in your opinion, is that this buyout will have massive, massive repercussions, and there will be thousands of El Pasuins that are going to be outraged during election season, and it might not be right now, right now it might just be us, but I can guarantee you that there's going to be thousands of El Pasuins that are going to be extremely frustrated and outraged if this buyout goes through. So, like I said, the least you can do is make this feasibility study to figure out exactly what are our options, because this buyout has financial injustice, and it has climate injustice. We've been speaking about the financial injustice, how JP Morgan is criminally liable, criminally, is, is a convicted criminal for, for financial crimes, but also in the, in the aspect of climate injustice. JP Morgan is the top financier of fossil fuel infrastructure in the world, they've invested more than 70, $75 billion in fossil fuel industries, and...
Mr. Oscoto, you've reached the three minutes.
Thank you, thank you for your time, please contact us if you have more questions.
Mayor, the next speaker is Mr. Howard Perlmutter, he signed up on three items, and he would like to speak on each item individually.
I'd like to address and ask questions of whoever led the negotiation on the franchise agreement.
Sir, a call to the public is not, is not allowed to have a conversation with the Council, you can make your statements, but there is no back and forth of answering questions.
So, in other words, I can't ask how the net present value of the franchise agreement was determined?
No, sir, the, the only purpose of call to the public is for you to address counsel on your concerns.
Okay, all right. So, we'll have to assume that whoever did this negotiation on behalf... So we'll have to assume that whoever did this negotiation on behalf of the city certainly did not take into account the, all the factors that would be necessary to figure out the net present value of the franchise agreement that you're considering. Now, the first time that the electric power industry paid me to work on finance and engineering software was 44 years ago here in El Paso. I then left El Paso to work with NASA on atmospheric modeling, and I became deeply aware of what is going on in terms of the Earth's atmosphere, some of the earliest information on climate, and also on the potential of future technologies that NASA was working on in the 1970s, in particular photovoltaics. At that time, when I was working with NASA, the cost per watt of photovoltaics was $80 per watt, and now the factory price of photovoltaics coming out of a factory is 20 cents a watt. That's a 200-to-1 reduction in the cost of the fundamental technology over about 45 years. That is a big change, and it is not stopping. The same kind of change, when I worked for NASA, we were working on $100-million line item on the federal budget to be the world's fastest computer to do atmospheric modeling. Today, the phone you have in your pocket is more powerful than that $100-million computer. The same thing is happening with energy. Photovoltaics have come down 200-to-1 and are going to be getting cheaper and cheaper and cheaper and cheaper. El Paso Electric has been around for a century, and now the decision you're about to make is going to have an effect on the majority of the coming century in El Paso. And it is really, really important that this be not a, you know, lump together the question of how we're going to beautify streets, or, you know, some of these other things that, yeah, they're important for the city, but not like this. Not like this. Now, after I worked for NASA, I had 17 years in Silicon Valley, I had a couple of companies, one of them-
Mr. Pearlutter, you've reached the three minutes, sir, and I believe you've been speaking on items one and two together. Is that correct?
That was on item one, and I'm going to go to item two, and then I'll go to item five.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor, did you want to?
Yes.
One and two is combined, sir.
But I'll do six minutes on one and two, because that was how I planned my speech.
When did this council combine items one and two?
Every, as each one came up, that we announced, there was-
But the conversation with the city clerk?
So my company did projects for media companies in New York like CBS, and Disney in Hollywood, and Apple in Silicon Valley, very involved in the transition of technologies. Another company I had created the software and the technology that brought Apple into the infrastructure markets and the geospatial markets, very relevant not only to roads, but also to electric utilities. But then I was an international guru on information technology in financial centers like London and Singapore, and some of my seminars in London, JP Morgan sent people, they paid money to listen to me. And I think that's particularly interesting. They weren't particularly the brightest people. You know, JP Morgan, you know, oh, they're so wonderful, or smart, or shrewd, or whatever. No, they're not. And letting them determine the future of El Paso's energy situation is really not smart. So this company paid me to listen to what I had to say about strategy and architecture for future infrastructure in the web and internet space primarily, and what I can tell you is that the future of the energy world is going to be following the future of the information world. And just like AT&amp;T was a national monopoly in telephones, I can tell you, we wouldn't have the internet, the web, these phones, and Facebook, Google, Twitter, et cetera. We wouldn't have all that if AT&amp;T was still the monopoly. You cannot have a franchise to a monopoly utility in El Paso and expect El Paso to reach its potential. El Paso is the number-one city in the United States. Yes, it's the 10th sunniest in the world, but El Paso is the number-one city in the United States for solar potential, and it has been for decades. And I've been telling people, I'm on record in the El Paso Times since 1974, talking about these things, and I have to tell, and I gave the keynote for Senator Shapley's solar legislation a dozen years ago. And now we have blown it. The leadership of El Paso has blown it so badly that now El Paso is like Manhattan was when Europeans came and bought it for $24. This buyout by JP Morgan of El Paso Electric reflects the fact that El Paso Electric has screwed up on solar and wind tremendously. Now the possibility is that the franchise agreement that you guys are putting together, number one, must be delayed, number two, we have to have real intelligent people coming and talking about how we should really structure this for El Paso. Then, more importantly than all of that, is it must be non-exclusive. The assumption that an electric utility needs an exclusive monopoly is obsolete thinking and does not apply to the 21st century.
Mr. Pearlutter, you've reached the three minutes, once again, on EX2.
All right, now I'm going to go to the final one. Now, this brings me to the bigger question that has to do with the whole question of culture and developing the economy of El Paso, and that's why I'm going to talk about item five, and having to do with the question of a basketball stadium tearing down an old historic neighborhood. Why I'm going to talk about that and how it connects to all that is, all right, I've been, you know, my family moved here 51 years ago, and of that time, I've been away for 30 years, 22 of it in Silicon Valley, five years in Europe and Asia. So I've seen the world, I've been involved in almost all the most important high-tech centers around the world, and every five or 10 years, I come back to El Paso and say, have you gotten with it yet? Have you gotten with it yet? And I come back again, and you're still not with it. But now, it's a crisis. El Paso has an ability to do something not only for ourselves and our region, but also for our nation and our world, and El Paso's solar resource, we are the Saudi Arabia of solar energy, and solar energy is now going to be what drives things in the future. If I had more time, I would talk about this much more broadly, but electric cars, electricity instead of gasoline, smart meters, all the way to blockchain, tons of things are changing, changing. Technology is wiping all of this. If you all remember Blockbuster Video and how it changed to Netflix, and there's millions of other examples. If you want to attract the bright, creative people to El Paso, we're going to make this something like a Silicon Valley, or a Hollywood, or a Wall Street, or put El Paso really on the map. Don't be a third-rate copycat of things people were doing 20, 30, 40 years ago. El Paso could be something like a Wall Street, or Hollywood, or Silicon Valley, because our number-one capability here isn't any of the stuff that you all have been doing with, well, you know, these economic initiatives. Solar energy is our number-one thing. We've got cheaper potential electricity here than anywhere in the United States. In fact, Beto O'Rourke personally told me that four years ago, that he met with the president of El Paso Electric, and they bragged him that they have the lowest cost of electricity of any utility in the United States. And we are not valuing the franchise agreement anywhere near what its real value is. A $100-million slush fund is nowhere near what we should take as a bribe, and we shouldn't even be taking the bribe. But if we're taking a bribe, it should be at least a quarter-billion to a billion-dollar bribe, because, look, the economic development here, the potential of selling El Paso's electricity to the nation is what's at stake here. This isn't about just what ratepayers will be paying. This is about us as entrepreneurs and as the community, taking our solar resource in El Paso and selling it to not only the nation, but to Mexico.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlutter.
To the world.
You've reached the three minutes, once again, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The next speaker is Ms. Sylvia Seraphos. Sylvia Seraphos.
I'm just not here.
Thank you. Dr. Rick Bonart. Good morning, sir. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm keenly aware of all the issues involved, having participated as an intervener, and I will be careful not to betray my 408 confidentiality clauses, but I think that we can probably tie this up and crystallize some of the ideas you've heard today already. Mr. Pearlutter did an excellent job, and as it stands, what you have before you is a decision on that clause, it's a 1401, and I believe as things stand, it's not in the best interest of our community to accept the current deal in its form. One of the most alarming portions of this, and is part of my testimony that I submitted as part of the Public Utility Commission's deliberations, is the appearance of impropriety. The $100-million fund must be regarded as something that you should put at very, very distant arms-length, to avoid what they consider to be, and what others are interpreting, as a bribe. The other thing that I'm very concerned about when I attended these meetings was the lack of experts by your party. Not so much attorneys, which have sliced and diced this agreement to an infinite detail, but what's missing is somebody that would come in there and actually tell you, look, this is the best that we can get, this is what we need to do, and this is the best that we need to do for the future of our electric company. You know, what's so attractive to JP Morgan is that they have a captive audience here, captive customers, and a guaranteed rate of returns. But what's sad about that is that has not taken into account where you're going to be going with this utility in the future, and that's the lack of experts that you've brought to the table, and that's why you should pause. The other thing is, is as other people have already pointed out, utilities are one of the most very regressive kind of burdens that people face. Everyone needs electricity, and it's the lower-income people that can least afford to be hurt by something of this nature. It's very obvious that what happens in these kinds of deals is that the people that take this over will cut CapEx to the maximum, withdraw assets as much as they can, and leave the rest of us to pay the burden. So I also was very alarmed by the lack of willingness at these meetings for your party to engage in some meaningful discussions with myself and some others. There are 14 other entities that have failed to sign off on the latest agreement. So I would implore you to take a step back. I think that their suggestions are awesome, that we should have some meetings on each district to allow the public to weigh in, because you're determining-
Thank you, Dr. Bonart.
-the fate of a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The final speaker is Mr. John Whitelaw. Mr. Whitelaw signed up on EX1. Good morning, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council members, and thank you in particular Representative Vanello for putting the motion forward that we should be able to address you before you actually discuss these issues. I think it's a real important step for democracy and for the people of the city to be involved in these kinds of decisions that are critical to our future. I'm an engineer and a citizen of District 1. I have two kids, and I think all of us at this point should be very, very aware of the existential threat we face from climate change. And for some of us, we're old enough that probably we're not going to see the worst of it, but our kids are going to see the worst of it. Our kids are depressed on a level that you haven't seen before, because they're terrified about their future for very good reasons. This moment is a moment in which the City Council of El Paso has an opportunity to do something, something pretty substantial, especially when you heard previous speakers talking about the size of the solar potential here. This is the opportunity to provide carbon-free, low-impact energy to not just this region, but people beyond it, and turning over the control to private equity firm IIF, or JP Morgan, whatever we're going to call it, is a complete abdication of public responsibility. What we need to do is, at the very least, put a pause on it, you know, find out if it's the feasibility of the city taking control, and if we're not able to take control, we should put in an extremely restrictive covenant on the contract that enforces both economic justice issues and a very rapid transition to zero-carbon energy production by El Paso Electric, like by 2030 kind of time. We are in an emergency, and we need to act. Thank you.
Thank you all. Let's have a motion to move to executive session.
Motion.
Move to retire an executive session. Ms. Pyron, can you give us copies of whatever was-
I will. Yes, I will distribute copies of everything that was submitted to all of council. There's a motion in a second to retire to executive session. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And the City Council of the City of El Paso may retire to executive session pursuant to Section 3.5A of the El Paso City Charter and the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, to discuss any of the following. Executive session item one, Public Utility Commission of Texas, docket number 49849, joint report and application of El Paso Electric Company, Sun Jupiter Holdings LLC and IIF US Holding, two LP for regulatory approvals under Pura 14.101, 39.262, and 39.915, matter number 19-1008-126, under 551.071, and 551.087. Executive session item two, El Paso Electric Company franchise, matter number 19-1008-132, and 19-1008-126.001, under 551.071, and 551.087. Executive session item three, ex parte, City of El Paso, Supreme Court of Texas, case number 19-0022, matter number 17-1001-171.002, under 551.071. Executive session item four, City of El Paso versus Max Grossman, Eighth Court of Appeals, case number 08-19-00227.